I'd like to call the Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Fenslow, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We have an exciting presentation, the Annual Audit. Nancy. Just as you're coming up, I really appreciate everything you do. If people aren't aware, on the, besides just the audit, they also do a comprehensive report that gets submitted to an outside national group for review, and it's a voluntary thing. And I think, what, 10, 11 years in a row now, we've actually gotten an award for that, which is unusual. So, thanks for everything you do.
I'm actually gonna turn the podium over to Colby Jensen with Forvis first, and let her go through procedures that the audit firm did on our behalf.
Sure. Mayor, members of the city council, as Nancy mentioned, my name is Colby Jensen. I'm an audit director with Forvis, a public accounting firm located here in Omaha, Nebraska. So, we worked with Nancy and her team to review the financial statements of the city, and also the information that Nancy compiles in this very large document, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. From our audit process, we have various discussions with management. We also meet with individuals as part of the Audit Committee as well, to determine if there's areas that are more susceptible to risk in relation to the financial statement audit, which helps us determine where we determine which areas of the financial statements we'll look at a little bit further, or perform detailed testing on. To let you know, the audit of a financial statement does not relieve management or those charged with governance here of their responsibility and oversight of the information contained within the financial statements. And our responsibility as the auditors is to express an opinion on these financial statements, that they're free from material misstatement. So, that means we provide reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance, meaning we do not audit every transaction that the city enters into. But again, consider those risk thresholds and materiality levels to determine which areas of the financial statements we'll look at. We're pleased to announce that we have issued a clean or unmodified opinion on the financial statements of the city of Papillion. In addition to our opinion over the financial statements, we also issue a second opinion, which is over the internal controls on financial reporting and compliance. If there were any items that rose to the level of a significant deficiency or material weakness in internal control, meaning that there's a significant issue or pervasive issue in the internal control structure, we would make sure that we communicate that here with you all today. There were no items that came to our attention. In addition, there were no items related to noncompliance that would need to be communicated with you all today. I just want to thank Nancy for all of her assistance. The audit is a very long, drawn-out process. There's a lot of information. And from an auditor's perspective, we ask a lot of questions, and sometimes those questions several times, to ask for further clarification. So Nancy and her team were nothing but helpful and willing to go above and beyond and answer our questions. So, we appreciate all of your support. Thank you.
I guess I would want to reiterate this, that when I prepare the report, it also goes into grading as the Finance Department. I mean, it's very much a departmental project, not an individual that can complete this much. In the report, the first letter of transmittal is simply gives background of the city, gives kind of a oversight of some of the economic development that is going on in the city. And that is a letter that we have a lot of latitude in expressing some future observations of the city. And I do get a lot of help from the Planning Department on that letter. The Management and Discussion Analysis, which is directly after the opinion, is probably the most user-friendly part for a non-financial person to read, and gives a little bit more of a picture of what happened during the fiscal year, as it relates to the city finances. Contained within that, you will notice that the General Fund on Assigned Balance for 2023, where the majority of our operations run through, is at $25 million, which is slightly down from Fiscal '23, or '22. Those decreases are a direct result of money being assigned both to police for the building remodel expansion, as well as additional street projects. And that was assigned at the budget time, intentional use of reserves, all planned for. Our net, our overall net position did increase during the fiscal year. $13 million of that increase was a direct result of annexation. We did the annexation of SID 151, 189, and 228, along with both the recreational facilities at Portal in Big Elk. While Tony's team was doing maintenance for quite some time at both of those locations, now because they were fully developed by the NRD, we were waiting for the actual warranty deed to be transferred to the city before we showed those capital assets being, belonging to the city. With the annexation, we also received bonded debt from those SIDs. But even with the, and that was the only new debt that we incurred during the year, so we still reduced our outstanding bond debt by $3,590,000. So, which can be, information on the actual bond issues can be found in Note G, as well as annual maturity schedules at the back of them. That will show you a picture of where we are at on an annual basis, and when those debt payments start to go down. And like last year, I discussed sales tax. I'm still going to discuss the sales taxes that relates to incentive companies. In Fiscal '22, we recorded forty, almost $43 million of payable to the state that we had been given notice of incentive program rebates. And again, this year, we're recording an additional $14 million due to the state for those incentive rebate companies. Those incentive rebate withholdings started in the summer of '23, so we've received no sales tax since November from the state. We won't receive any additional sales tax during the balance of this fiscal year, and probably two more fiscal years based on those incentives that have already been approved, as we anxiously await for their next round this summer. The Water Fund, the Sewer Fund, and the Golf Fund, our three large proprietary funds, did end the year with a positive cash flow. That is what we look for in order to be able to fund our future capital purchases and major maintenance for those departments or funds. And in the end, at the back of the report, we have the statistical section, which has many tables that have 10-year trends that relate to either financial trends, revenue capacity, debt capacity, and then the demographic, it's an economic information for the city. Some of it is at the county level, because that's all that's available. And then our own operating informational trends. And I think those statistical sections, which is kind of the additional part of the Annual Comprehensive Report, provides a lot of information, both to our bond investors, as well as those wanting to make economic investments into the Papillion area. That's all I have.
Any questions? Good, Nancy, really appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Powers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you. And I also want to say thank you, Nancy, to you and your team. Like you said, it's a team effort, and I know there was many late nights to get that done by you and your team. So, really, really appreciate that. And just for everybody else, so that they know that there is some audit software that I believe is getting implemented, that will hopefully help kind of streamline a little bit, make it a little easier in the future years. But again, a huge undertaking, really appreciate it. Thank you again for that clean audit report. So, also, a big thank you to the Library Department for holding their second annual Library Con at the Landing. There was a high number of attendees and a great family event. So, I'm not sure if any of you had a chance to go out there, but another great year for that successful project that they came up with. So, glad to see that. And then just to touch on a couple of agenda items, one for tonight, and one for the next agenda tentatively planned. On tonight's agenda is approval of a contract with American Fire Training Systems for the construction of a new fire training facility. And just to give a little bit of information for the public, if this is approved, the facility will be constructed at our current public work site, and it's towards the back of the city's property. The location was chosen because it is located fairly central to our fire territories, so it can be accessed by all four stations during all three shifts, which is why that was chosen. And then, just a reminder, the recent budget amendment included funding for this project, with approximately 60% coming from the CARES funding, and the other remaining 40% from the MFO Capital Reserve Fund for that. And then, another exciting project is tentatively scheduled for the next council meeting, is the approval of the contract with the architect for the Police Department Expansion and Remodel Project. And the plan is to use the CMAR process for that, the construction manager at risk, and the architect firm who's, with that contract, would help us select that CMAR construction manager. And I believe you've all seen the tentative plans, but I did want to just throw that offer back out there before next meeting. If anybody wants to see kind of what the tentative plans are for that, or want another meeting, to reach out to Mark, Chief Widdit, or myself, and we can go back through those. And those plans are subject to change. They would be depending on, once we select a contractor, based on bid and pricing, we would look at potential modifications for that. But again, did want to make sure everybody's comfortable with that before next meeting. And I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Sunday, second by Councilman Fenslow. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? We have kind of a light agenda, and there's a couple of significant items that are on consent. So, I'm gonna ask Mr. Cleffner, maybe, for the public's awareness, can you give an overview of the Sixth Street Widening Project, and then also the Clearwell? We've been talking about Sixth Street for years, and now that we're finally doing something with it. So, part of it, they, I think, what's the scope of it? Because I know it's a multi-phase. And then, on a Clearwell, a lot of people still ask, even though we've tried to do it in the education, what's a Clearwell?
I'll start with the Sixth Street project. The current contracts on the agenda are for the scoping of the actual final design of the Sixth Street. That portion's from 72nd to 84th. That'll be a couple of year process to go through to design, and then hopefully we're looking at a '27, '28 construction year. That, we would just look, we're just currently looking at adding a turn line down the middle, and adding other improvements on the outside via a trailer sidewalk along those lines. We were also, just so everybody's aware, we were also just selected recently for the second phase of Portal Road, which is the 84th to 96th. We should receive that award of funding in May. So, you'll see the contract with the state come through in June or July for that one. That one will actually go to a four slash five lane. So, that kind of covers an overview of the Sixth Street and Portal projects. The Clearwell, we actually broke ground last week for that. The two contracts currently on there are for the continuation of design services to allow the design engineer to answer questions and things along that during the design. The other contract is for construction observation, to observe the construction. The Clearwell is, it's a 2.5 million gallon Clearwell, but it does is that it allows us to generate more water at a faster rate, and gives us additional detention time at the treatment plant to add chlorine and other chemicals. It gives more time for those chemicals to react with the water. This will increase our gallons per day. By, we're roughly estimating about 2.5 to 5 million gallons per day additional we'll be able to do with the Clearwell. This is about a one and a half to two-year project.
Thank you very much. And then, there were also the U-Boss is on there again this year. And again, for the public, that's where we've been going through, and we repair the concrete hard surface, and then we grained it down and come over with what looks like an asphalt overlay. It's been a great project. I think we're the first ones in the Midwest, or at least in Nebraska, that have done that. I think this will probably be the actual fourth year of lane work. We had a year of mapping. And the audit report, Nancy mentioned a lot of statistics, and one of the tables is just some operating indicators by function. And one of the things in there is, from an engineering perspective, the miles of street reconstruction. And I was just looking at the audit today, and the average lane miles from about 2014 to 2020 that we reconstructed was between one and four lane miles. 2019 and 2020, it was about one point, one and a half lane miles. Since the U-Boss, we've been doing 13 to 15 miles. So, I think it's been a good project. So, appreciate, appreciate that. So, that, all of those are on consent. So, I just wanted to make sure we highlight those, because they are pretty significant. Mr. Glover?
Mayor, can you explain how, how much more, or how many more years that putting that surface down, we can get out of a road before we have to redo it?
I'm gonna ask, look to Mr. Cleffner.
That really depends on the condition of the road when we go through. Some of the roads, we're doing additional panel repair. Others were just making joint repairs. With them being residential, I estimate that it adds another 10 to 15 years onto the useful life of the roadway. That being said, is that when we go to mill those off, if the underneath of the road is still in the same condition, which we're hoping at the end of it, it may add another 10 to 15 years when we do it again.
So, you can do it more than once?
Yes, yes. This is, it's a, it's a wearing surface. So, basically, when we get to a point that we feel that it needs to come back up, we can mill off just that surface and put another surface back down.
Okay. Thank you.
And if people remember when we did the initial, when we had, the year we had the initial mapping done, I think it took a snapshot of pretty much about every, I don't know, 100, 200 feet of every lane mile in town, and then put that onto GIS, so you can see the color coding of the conditions. And so, you could see your red and your yellow and your green road conditions. And they've been tackling it pretty much in order of, go to the quadrant of town that had the worst roads, and then keep working up with the idea of getting the greens and yellow, I mean, the reds and yellows up to green. And then, at that point, you're preventative maintenance. And I think we probably have most of the really bad ones taken care of now, maybe. We're getting there. Mr. Fenslow?
So, yeah, thanks, Mayor. I have a quick question for Mike. Mike, I was taking notes. Cornhusker, 72nd, 84th, '27, '28, did you say? Year starting 2027, 2028. Did I miss, did you say anything about Portal, or did I miss it? When will Portal?
The Portal Road, you're talking from '96 to 108th. That one, that one is not selected yet for funding.
Okay.
That one, actually, it's come to, it's come to my attention recently, that that's actually La Vista's. From '96 to 108th is La Vista's roadway. We only, they, we take possession pretty much where the Union Hall is, that road there where the post office is. From there to 108th, the south side's ours, but the north and the south side is technically La Vista's.
Okay.
So, so I'm working with Joe on that. We've talked about it. He was, if, if, if we were gonna be able to get it all in one shot, they were on board for it. I think next time, he'll apply for it, and we'll be a sponsor with him on that portion.
Do you have a rough timeline? I'm just curious. Is it too just impossible to say right now? It's, that's fine.
It's not implied.
Don't worry about it.
We're, we're, our goal is to apply for it. They usually do funding every two years. They select it every two years. We're hoping that if, if everything goes okay, it would be in the next round, because we scored high enough on this one. And to get this portion, so I'm, the next one should score just about the same.
Okay, thanks. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
6800s.
Motion passes. Next is item F1, Resolution R240055. A resolution to approve a fire training facility contract with American Fire Training Systems. Is a motion to approve Resolution R240055? Motion by Councilman Ingberg?
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
6800s.
Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items. Committees, Ad Hoc Committee met. I don't remember who was selected as chair. Thanks.
Forvis made a presentation of their audit findings. Ms. Jensen introduced herself, then turned it over to Nancy Hypes, who went over some of the financial statements found in the report, and explained some things, including the improvement in the city's overall net position, and that being attributable, attributable mostly to our city's annexations recently. Questions were addressed and answered for the members to our satisfaction, and we adjourned.
Appreciate it a lot. And just if people are wondering, we, the Ad Hoc Committee is a committee of four council members that review the audit, and just make sure we always have a different set of eyes. Every year, we mix it up. Two people from the prior year stay on the committee, and then we add two new. So, we get a little bit of a new perspective, a little bit of continuity, and we just repeat that process every year. So, thank you very much. I don't think any other committees have met. Any comments from the floor? Any comments from the floor? Welcome. And if you'd state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Worthman. I'm at 1002 South Madison Street in Papillion. And I'm here about our friends at ALO. That started last year, as you guys probably are, and that gal's probably remember, I was over here asking about that. And numerous times, I was lied to. A fellow by the name of John Proff is supposed to be the guy that's heading that up. That's the only name that I've ever come up with. Does that sound right, Steve?
Frost.
Yeah. Anyway, he's never, he's been out there, and he was arguing with me about saying I wanted to have the whole thing done. I said, yes, I'd like to have it done. What I'd like to do first is hand these out, and then I'll quickly answer any questions. This is what it should look like, when it's cracked. And I mean, I, this is what it looks like.
Just, just so we capture the, just so we capture the recording, can you do the conversation at the microphone? You can go ahead and hand it out, but then do the conversation at the microphone.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. The, they made the promises, and they never kept any. They've been there since last August. They were there two weeks, and they've been back and forth. They've probably been there 10 times, because they had a lot of problems with that. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
And the one time, this John Proff was out there, and he brought one of his employees over, and they were talking about, and we was kneeling down on the pavement, they're right in my driveway. And there was this big truck sitting out there right beside us. And he, I said, well, they had their trucks up on my property, even on the front. And he said, and this John Proff says, no, no, they never do that, and all that. And there was a tall, skinny truck driver standing there. And he kept looking at me, and he said, and he finally said, could I talk to him a minute? And he's pointing at me. I said, yeah, what do you need? And he says, could we drive my truck up on there? And he says, we gotta get that, this big heavy piece of metal up on this post and use it up there. I looked at this John Proff, and I said, what's this tell you? And he says, well, we did it before. And he swat, he just swallowed and looked up at me, and that's when he, I, we were supposed to have a meeting after that, and I knew that was it. I said, look, if you look at those pictures, there's one down there that, there was a tanker truck sitting there, too. That weighs, that, those, that machine weighs 22,000 pounds, and he was driving on my driveway. And in one of the corners of the pictures, there's a small crack starting right behind the back of it, down in the left-hand corner. And you can see it. And I said, it's new. And he said, they didn't do that. The tread is this far from there. And when that runs, it's going like this, and they're squirting water through there when they're drilling. They insisted on doing that. Since then, I've talked to a lot of the different guys that handle cement. And they say, he should have taken a hand crank and went in there, and never brought that on your property at all. But they insisted on using that, and they promised if they did anything. Not only that, they went over there with those treads, and I got a mower, and a brand-new mower. And I was going out trying to mow in there, and it kept hanging up, because the treads were over here, and it left a hump in the middle. And when I'd run into it, it'd kill the engine. That's how far that pushed that dirt down. And I don't know if there's any guarantee on that or not. I'll probably have to eat that and have somebody come in with a blade. But he said, this, that, when he said the two panels, that's what this John Proff tried to sell me. And I said, no. You, when you were in there, and if you see where that machine is next to where that little scroll fence is in there, that he knocked that over and laid it down, and it was sitting there bouncing like this while it's drilling, you know? And it pushed that concrete over, and it cracked. The, I've had the guys out there from the cement companies, and they say, no, no. In fact, they found a couple that I didn't even see. This happened since then. And those cracks are now, they, when they started, just a surface crack, you could see on that, where I got the arrows on it, they, they opened up farther. And they're gonna continue to do that. And when I, he said, you've been taking your trailer out. I said, no, I haven't had it out there for two years. I didn't drive on that. They did. And that's the complaint I've got. And I've got two estimates here. One's for 7,500, the other one's for 6,600. That's way more than that that pad's gonna be. And I'm the only guy that's gonna be caught with that. And I was willing to negotiate, but he didn't want to even talk to me. When he's talking that truck there, he just sits there and lies, says, I'll call you. Never called. I sat all one night there the first time, and after that, I just waited until the time was up and gave him an hour, and I'd let it go do something else. You can't trust him at all. And since then, I've heard a lot from the cement guys, because they said, oh, yeah, yours isn't the only one. But that's all I've got. Appreciate you guys listening to me.
No, I appreciate it. And we've got to be careful how much we dialogue, because it's not an agenda item. But you were here, the, when ALO was here, one time, you were here, and you had the same conversation. And I think we attempted to at least make sure they talked to you, and it was during the council meeting. Obviously, it sounds like it didn't get resolved. But I'm gonna ask, Mr. Cleffner, would you be able to maybe help facilitate, I know you've helped a couple of times, would you be able to maybe help facilitate a conversation between the ALO main construction guy and him?
Yeah. Mr. Worthman and I talked on his way in. I called the representative. If you don't, if you don't have a message when you, if you do not have a message when you get home tonight, please call my office in the morning. He has your number.
I've gotta go to Lincoln tomorrow, so.
Okay. Well, you should have it tonight. If you don't have the message.
I'll be here. I'm retired, so I'll be home. I'm an old guy.
But you know Mr. Cleffner, our Public Works Director?
Yes, I've heard of him. Yes.
Okay, so.
I met him earlier.
So, if you don't have a message from them tomorrow or by the end of the week, can you let him know?
Okay, yes.
And we'll help facilitate a conversation.
Okay, I'll get your number and stuff, okay?
I appreciate that.
All right. Well, thanks a lot for listening to me.
Thank you.
Because it's, I'm getting some bad vibes here.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Council comments. Mr. Sunday?
I just want to go on record as saying, and I hope ALO is listening, I for one am very disappointed with ALO Fibers continuing to drag their feet in addressing Mr. Worthman's issues. They've not yet made him whole for the damage that, damages that they did cause to his property. And if this isn't addressed by the end of this work week, I intend to request that their permits be pulled by the city. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. We had a couple of ribbon cuttings. Indigo Cottage and Crafts is a local business. What's nice one about this one, at about 96th and Schram, there'd been a commercial strip building that had been built, and it's quite a while ago. And just because it's kind of off the beat, traditional beaten path, it didn't have any tenants for quite a while. But now, I think there's three tenants in there, if I remember right. So, really, that idea of having pockets of commercial neighborhood in some newer areas is, seems to be taken off back there. So, that's nice to see. There's a lot of, a lot of rooftops back there. Ms. Powers and I, again, attended the United Cities Meeting. Most of it's just trying to stay up with what the legislature's doing, but I'll tell you, it's almost impossible to do. It's moving so fast, and even, today's It's moving so fast, and even, today's a good example. There was a major bill that we're trying to follow, but it was amended, so everything was struck out of it, so you literally end up with a shell bill that says nothing, but at least in their minds, it's a bill that can go forward, so if they have to have a first, second, third reading, the bill did, but it's got no content. And then the negotiation of what's in the content is going on outside the public realm, so we attempt to stay up on what's going on, but if you ask us, we'll probably say we don't know. The legislature, I think, has about seven working days left, so I expect there's a lot of backroom negotiations going on. It's going to move very fast, and it'll probably be like last year, where a lot of amendments will go into one bill, and you'll end up seeing what historically has been a lot of independent bills being put together in one bill. And then the issue there is, there's so much compromise going on, do you really even understand the bill, and what's good about it, what's the unintended consequences? And I think the impact to us is probably going to be on the budget planning. We may be a little bit slower in budget planning this year, because we're going to have to see what, what do the legislative bills mean to us, and then how do we, how do we assimilate that into the budget planning? But if there's things you're concerned about or want us watching, let us know, because we are trying to actively follow it. But I think this next week to 10 days will be real telling of what the legislature's doing. I don't think they've got a common path right now. It seems to be about three or three or four different camps down there that are trying to negotiate and come together. Grosharpy had a board meeting. I think you're aware that, again, that's the Economic Development Group. There is a new executive director, and well, she came and presented to us, so you know that. So that was the first board meeting with her, and then the Sewer Agency continues to meet, and then, I think that's most of the big things, the Vietnam Memorial, the planning's going on. Again, June 6th, put that on your calendars. That should be a really good event. And if you haven't driven by, the foundation, the Memorial Foundation had the sculpture work done, and the, the, not the characters, the individuals that are in the Huey helicopter have been placed. So if you drive by and look at the helicopter, it looks like people are sitting in it, because that part of the sculpture's been done. Any other council comments? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover.
Second.
Second by Councilman Sunday. Please vote.
Six, eight, zero, nays.
We are adjourned. Thank you.